We'd like to go ahead and get started this evening with our public comments regarding agenda items, and then once we finish that, then we'll start the city council meeting. We have three people that have signed up, four public comments regarding agenda items. So, the first one will be Ms. Rhodey Smith, and you have three minutes. If you could come forward, please. Ms. Rhodey Smith? Ms. Rhodey Smith? Oh, okay. Yes, ma'am. Right over here, to the podium.
Turn on the mic on for...
I talk loud on here, thank you. My name is Rhodey Smith. I live at 1518 Walnut. There's a vacant lot beside me. I got in my car one day, had my puppet, there was a snake about that long. I've asked two or three times for certain people to mow their graves, and they hadn't grown from mowing shit. I don't think they think it's time. If they don't mow it, I'm gonna mow it, and I'm gonna send it here. They're gonna pay for it. Because I pay for someone to do my yard. The neighborhood Pine Bluff already looks like S-H-I-T. So, we need to make Pine Bluff look better than where it is now, in our neighborhood. Thank you, and have a blessed night.
Thank you. Mr. Mike Adams? Agenda item number 10.
Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening.
And city council members. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak to you today. My name is Mike Adams, and along with my wife, we own Cycle &amp; Marine Supercenter here in Pine Bluff. It's been in its current location for 15 years, and we've been in business in Pine Bluff for 45. Talking about Agenda Item 10. We've been displaying our product, ATVs, boats, and side-by-sides, and lawn mowers on grassy areas of our property, and not in the right way for all of this time. In fact, that's one of the reasons we are there, so we can use that for display. As far as I know, there has never been a complaint about us displaying our product like this. In addition, there are already laws on the books that prohibit blocking sidewalks and driveways. While you are concerned where I display our four-wheelers, the junior high and high school students have to walk up and down Camden Road from 28th Street to Watson Chapel, and there are no sidewalks any of that way, not one. It will be a hardship on the business if we have to display our product in parking lots, which you say we can't do either, and because of large setbacks in the roadway, the product will be much less visible, take up either parking places, or we'll have to pave other ground. This was not a restriction when we built the building in the location on Camden Road. Plus, the product we sell is made to be used off-road, not on streets or highways, so the display is much more appropriate in the grassy areas. In addition, if we pave over more property, it makes it harder to absorb rainfall and runoff, and the grain grass looks much better than asphalt and prevents flooding. I doubt you've had any complaints about the appearance of our business. We are losing businesses almost daily from Pine Bluff because they can move just down the road, and the sales tax rate is already lower with less problems. Two of my competitors are now in Whitehall and are already enjoying these advantages. I ask what I've asked before, and that is, please remember to make it easy to do business in Pine Bluff as is possible. Some of the businesses do care. We pay our taxes, we buy our licenses, and we do our best to make this city a better city. We are one of those, and thank you all.
Thank you. Ms. Marlene Davis-Lilly, speaking on Agenda Item Number 11.
My name is Marlene Davis-Lilly. I'm a disabled veteran that moved here to Pine Bluff five years ago. I joined a historic commission maybe a year later, and three years later, I purchased a building downtown, unbeknownst to me that that building was condemned at the time that I purchased it. There was nothing in place to tell me that that building was condemned. Now that the building next door, the VFW post, fell into my building, everything downtown is basically falling into my lap. But there's nothing in place for someone like me, who is actually invested in Pine Bluff, who moved here to be a part of this city. There's nothing in place to protect someone like me, who didn't know at all that the building was condemned. Now, if I go to pay the back taxes at the land commission, there's nothing there that says that that building is condemned. When I go to the Circuit Clerk's office to go and get my building put in my name, there's nothing there that says this building is condemned. There's something that should be in place to let people know. You know, I really want downtown to be up, because I'm here for the long haul, but I don't think that that was fair, for nothing to be in place, and then all of this is in my lap. Everything downtown is falling. That has nothing to do with my building, but because I'm invested here, it has something to do with me overall. So, I think something should be in place for that.
Ms. Lilly?
Thank you.
Can I ask you something?
Thank you.
You had said, you had mentioned about, you had asked the contractor to come in, and you're gonna give them the bricks.
Yes, there's someone who wants the bricks, but there's a roadblock that's stopping me from giving the bricks, because the little tiles that were on the floor that were basically crumbled had asbestos on them. But they're underneath the brick, so he can't move the brick unless I get someone who is certified in asbestos first, and then he can remove the bricks. He would take all the bricks.
Is this rubbish already on the ground?
Yes, it is.
And who can go in there and tell you how much of that rubbish is asbestos or not? I think that once it is crumbled on the ground, it loses its identity. So, I don't think that it shouldn't be required to have an asbestos person to do it.
We've already received certification from ADEQ on, because some was contaminated and some was not. So, how do you differentiate between what is and what is not?
So, we hadn't gotten a determination back from them yet.
We've got a preliminary, and it looks like it's the whole, all that one area is gonna be considered contaminated. We have another report that we should be getting back this week, but that's what it's gonna look like.
And then it's gonna be required that they have an asbestos person to do it?
They'll have to be a certified asbestos removal, yes. Yes.
And one other thing, nobody can find out who owns the VFW post.
We had mentioned that while back in a meeting. That should have been already in place in a folder or file in City Hall over the last 10 or 15 years, and that's not fair to other business owners down there that we can't find the owners of the buildings. It's not fair.
Actually, Ms. Lilly, I have received information that Simmons Bank owned the VFW, and in fact, some of the veterans was going to be here tonight to speak, but they decided that they would wait until the next council meeting. But they had documentation and letters between them and the bank, and their information, them responding back to the bank, because they could not get insurance on the building, and they was having all types of problems with the rain coming in, and mold, and everything. But, so they have documentation, so we hope that you will be here at the next council meeting.
Anybody else? Thank you. Thank you. The Pine Bluff City Council Meeting for April the 6th, 2015, is hereby called to order. May we have roll call, please?
Alderman Brownett. Alderman Stapp.
Here.
Alderman Walker.
Present.
Alderman Boyd.
Here.
Alderman Brown, Sr.
Here.
Alderman Mays.
Here.
Alderman Holcomb.
Here.
Alderman Brown, Jr.
Here.
Thank you. Each of you have a copy of the minutes. Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. It's been so moved and second that the minutes from March the 16th, 2015, be approved. Do we have any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to... Moving on to Ways and Means, Alderman Stapps will present...
Mayor, we had, we met, and we had five budget adjustments. The first one was $242,000, additional cost for the remodeling of the Joe Thomas facility. And in our discussion, they had a future reserve figure of $37,975. We approved the amount, the 24116, less the 37,965, for the budget adjustment to Joe Thomas.
Okay, you wanna make a motion on that?
I move for adoption.
Okay.
Second.
It's been properly moved and second that the budget adjustment in the amount of $242,000 less the reserve, future reserve in the amount of $37,975. That amount is to be subtracted from the requested amount, be approved. Any questions?
All in favor, the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the same time?
No. Question, discussion, come quick. Go ahead.
Quick, well, I'm sorry, you wanna discuss it? Go ahead.
Well, I was just thinking, you know, I read over this over the weekend, we spent a lot of money inside our buildings and not inside of our communities. This is a budget adjustment for $240,000 to finish the interior of the police station, already appropriated $2 million already. This is an additional $240,000 to go ahead and add into there some unseen things that were noticed during the construction. Now, I understand that you're gonna have problems doing construction, but we're putting too much money, of these taxpayers' dollars, into things that you can't see. We need to start putting a lot of this money out in the public where you can see where things are gonna be seen for a long time. It's not anything's been done lately that we can go out there and write home about. But everything we're doing is internal. The fire departments, no disrespect to the fire departments and the police departments, everything, all the money is done inside, while citizens are not enjoying the allocations of $240,000. And that's my discussion.
Actually, it will be $203,951.
You contracted, you also contracted $39,000 from, in the committee meeting a while ago, but it was up to $242,000.
I wanted the minutes to reflect what was being done.
But the thing about our parks out there, where people, kids can go out there and play, our senior citizens can't go to the park. It's things that we gotta go ahead and do tangible and get this city up and running.
Okay, we've already voted on this one, correct? It's already passed. All right. Moving on to the next.
Mayor, we have another budget adjustment for $19,772.27 for retirement, $216 hours vacation, and $1,008 hours accumulated to the move for adoption.
Second.
It's been properly moved and second that a budget adjustment for the fire department in the amount of $19,770.27 be approved. Floor is now open for discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Mayor, we have another budget adjustment to purchase 10 patrol cars in the amount of $270,000, which would come from the long proceed from Simmons Bank. Move for adoption?
Second.
It's been properly moved and second that a budget adjustment in the amount of $270,000 for the police department to purchase 10 patrol cars be approved. Floor is now open for discussion.
This is something else we was talking about, you know, police cars that the kids can't just play with, almost $300,000. It's nothing, it's nothing being, put in the dirt in the communities, you know? That's all I have to say about that as well.
Mayor Holcomb.
Yes, ma'am.
I wanted to make a statement that they have, I think, like a three-year period, you know, when they, when police cars have to be rotated out, and for some reason that they were left out of the budget, and I don't think that we purchased the right amount last year. But these are, they are rotated out, and the ones, the older ones are put in a less used position than on the streets.
That's correct, and we also have designated funds for this, too, so to help, it's gonna offset the payments on this. Okay.
Mayor, we also have another budget adjustment...
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Mayor, we have another adjustment of $75,000 in emergency fund to vehicles, in the vehicle fund. And it's gonna reduce the revenue budget to match the 2014 history and the further 2015 expense budget to make our first loan payment on these cars in 2016. Move for adoption?
Second.
It's been properly moved and second that a budget adjustment in the amount of $75,000 regarding our emergency vehicle funds be approved. Floor is now open for discussion.
You know, I just want the citizens to understand, we just appropriated over a million, over half a million dollars, for things that you would not see inside your neighborhoods and things like that.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
I pass.
Okay. Okay. Any other discussion? Hearing done, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Mayor, we have another budget adjustment. This is an addition to the 2015 budget farm, required to adjust the base pay for police officers in the amount of $159,44681. Move for adoption?
Second.
It's been properly moved and second that a budget adjustment in the amount of $159,446.81 be approved to adjust the base pay for our police officers. Floor is now open for discussion. Hearing done, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Mayor, that's the end of the... Have we paid the bills for the city?
Second.
Okay, it's been properly moved and second that the bills for the city be paid. Floor is now open for discussion. Hearing done, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Now, we move on to Orders and Resolutions. Number one, an ordinance amended Section 2, that's 49 of the Code of Orders of the City of Pine Bluff, Arkansas, concerning rules or procedure for the meetings of the city council and related purposes, up for the third and final reading.
Actually, we decided we were gonna pull that one for right now.
Okay. That, number one, has been pulled by the sponsor. Number two, we're gonna read ordinance number two for the third and final reading. Number three would be the third and final reading. Number four would be the third and final reading. Number five would be the third and final reading. Order number six will be up for the first reading. Number seven, up for the first reading. Number eight will be up for the first reading. Number nine, up for the first reading. Number 10, first reading. We have a resolution, number 11, for a joint city counter task force of downtown, and resolution number 12, appointing Lakeisha Hill to now uniform employees' retirement.
Thank you, sir. Economic and Community Development, Alderman Brown, Sr. Did I do it again? No, I didn't.
You know, I met you...
Oh, okay.
But I didn't hear you. But at that rate, we have no comment, we have no report.
Okay, thank you, sir. Public Health and Welfare, Alderman Brown, Jr.
No report, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Public Works, Alderman Mays.
Mayor, we didn't have a meeting, we had one scheduled, we had to reschedule it, but I do have some comments on, you know, I've been talking about the 71602 zip code, and the City of Whitehall is having a school-millage election over the next couple of weeks. And what we've noticed, what I've noticed, what we've noticed, is that two polling places for the City of Whitehall village are in the City of Pine Bluff. One is at Gospel Temple on 11th and Oakwood, and another one is at Central Baptist on Dalloway Road, which is in the fourth ward. Now, the City of Whitehall with the 71602 zip code come all the way up to Car Mart. Everything west of Car Mart is considered Whitehall in the City of Pine Bluff. Now, how can... Now, I'm still, I'm still open for discussion, but I'm gonna ask the city's attorneys openly, how can the City of Whitehall have two polling places in the City of Pine Bluff? And once again, what we've always been saying is how the zip code is connecting and taking a lot of our population. We're really not losing population, we're losing numbers because of the 71602 Whitehall, Arkansas zip code. Joe, can you explain that, if you don't mind? Through the mic, because everybody in the area don't understand it, and we're having a hard time trying to figure it out, because if we can have polling places in the City of Whitehall, I think, you know, I don't think that'll work out perfectly.
Well, the Whitehall School District boundaries take in certain parts of western Pine Bluff, and because there are patrons of the Whitehall School District in west Pine Bluff, in order for them to have the opportunity to cast a ballot for the school board there, they have a couple of polling places for people to go vote at. School district boundaries don't follow city boundaries. The school district for Whitehall, actually, I believe if I understand correctly, the eastern part of I-530, the Whitehall school district extends all the way up to the Jefferson County, Grant County line. The Dalloway School District has everything west of I-530 all the way up to the Jefferson County, Grant County line. But the school boundaries just don't have the same geographical footprint as a city corporate boundaries, and they have to serve and afford an opportunity for those patrons who may live in Pine Bluff, but their school district is the Whitehall school district, they have to provide them an opportunity to vote for school board members.
Yes, sir.
Mayor, I know that we are in his committee, and this was part of what we were talking about earlier, but I didn't, I don't like Joe's answer. Joe's answer doesn't make sense, because each school district has a boundary. Dalloway has a line drawn, Pine Bluff has a line drawn, and they don't interact. So, Whitehall is in Whitehall, and Dalloway District is in Dalloway District. Now, a tax proportion carries that same thing, like what goes on in industrial park carries a tax for the Whitehall school district because they're closer. But what Joe says just now about the school districts and the polling places, they can't interact. Mays, Alderman Mays said something that made a lot of sense. He said, wouldn't make sense for us to have a polling spot in Whitehall, so why Whitehall have a polling spot in Pine Bluff? Now, I didn't do that, maybe we need to be asking the election commission, but I don't like what Joe just said about those boundaries, because Whitehall has their own school district boundary, as well as Dalloway, Pine Bluff, and Watson Chapel. You can't intermix those. You can't draw a line, and you can't say, well, some of the people that live in the Dalloway District, some of the people living in, that just don't work. You can't vote in Whitehall District for Dalloway, you can't vote in Dalloway District for Whitehall. That won't work at all. And I hope that I'm being clear, because it could be confusing if you're not with me. You cannot use Watson Chapel voters in Whitehall District. You cannot use Whitehall voters in Dalloway District. So, that was not a good answer what Joe just told us. I'm just gonna tell you just like it is. I don't know where we are with it, maybe, might need to be asking the election commissioner. However, they don't intermingle. You can't vote in Whitehall for Watson Chapel, you can't win Watson Chapel or Dalloway. Doesn't happen.
Perhaps I didn't make myself clear.
Alderman Stapps? Yes, sir.
Let Joe go ahead.
Yes, sir.
Whitehall, the City of Whitehall does not have polling places in Pine Bluff. The Whitehall School District has put polling places in, for those people who live in west Pine Bluff, who are within the Whitehall School District. The only alternative would be to make everyone who lives in west Pine Bluff go out to Whitehall to vote for the school board. They have actually made it more convenient for those people who live in west Pine Bluff, who are within the Whitehall School District, to be able to vote for the school board. School board, as I say again, school district boundaries do not follow city boundaries. Pine Bluff School District extends out of Pine Bluff considerable ways. Dalloway's the same, Whitehall's the same. They just, Sheridan's the same, they all have covered different territories. This is actually just something to allow those voters in west Pine Bluff the chance to have a closer polling place than they otherwise would have if they just insisted on having the polling place in the corporate boundaries of Whitehall.
Okay. Yes, Alderman's...
My concern was, and I've asked Alderman Mays, is that, I guess, similar to what Joe was saying, but the only way you would know is whether or not if somebody lives in Pine Bluff, is voting on a millage increase, is when they vote. If you had a chance to go back and see who voted, then that way you could question it. But if you do it beforehand, you know, what have we stopped? Because we don't know what has been done. But if we allow the people to vote, and they vote that they shouldn't be voting, then I think we would have more of a question concerning it. And that's what I asked that we would do, you know, before we bring it back out here and start asking questions about where it's located, but as actually see whether or not if anybody's gonna be voting in a place that they shouldn't be. And that's what I thought that we were gonna do.
Well, I understand what you're saying, but the thing about it, our citizens need to know this. My point is this, if we don't stop that 71602 zip code, you're gonna wake up, I'm giving you a warning, you're gonna wake up and your property is gonna be gone. If you go over there behind Car Mart and ask anybody that lived by Car Mart on Sixth and Blake, what's their mailing address, and they're gonna tell you 71602 Whitehall, Arkansas. We have a lot of money, am I right or wrong? We have a lot of money mingled up in that area, and it's not fair. I'm giving you a warning, you're gonna wake up one morning, and it's gonna be, Whitehall's gonna be over in the third ward, you're gonna come out to the second ward, and you're gonna come out to the first ward. That's the plan. I'm telling you, we need to stop that now, while we have a chance. It's serious business. Pine Bluff is gonna be off the map. And I'm giving you a fair warning, now, I'm doing the best I can, and now's a good time to tell the citizens of Pine Bluff to look and try to correct your addresses now. You know you're gonna live in Whitehall, you're in Pine Bluff. And some of y'all are just settling with that, but let me tell you something, they got your mailboxes now, it's gonna be your dirt next, your ground. See, it's a silent annexation right now, without the ground, without the land. I'm giving you a fair warning, and you need to stop this before it's too late. You're gonna wake up one morning, and you won't be able to do nothing, because it's gonna be too far gone. I'm trying to do my best to cut this thing off, and that school election is wrong. They sent Pastor James Murray a letter. They sent it to him, they sent it to his deacon of the church over on Oakwood, about an election in Pine Bluff for this Whitehall School District. That mean they're gonna take a lot of their money out of the whole area, it's gonna go to Whitehall. You're talking about, what, $6,000 a child? We're not losing population, we're losing addresses, and we need to make sure that one that makes sense. I'm giving y'all a fair warning. I hope this gets into y'all's spirit, because it's serious business. They're gonna wipe Pine Bluff off the map, if you ain't careful. Thank you.
Okay. Moving on, development and planning, Alderman Boyd.
Mayor, I don't have a report per se, but a couple of the agenda items is gonna be recommended to come to the Development Planning Committee, which will be next Tuesday, the 14th, at 10:00 a.m. And I think during this time, I was informed, a gentleman's gonna come and share with us about the codes.
Yes, sir.
Duke, I wanna call his last name.
I'm Mr. Duke Fakury with the chamber. Yes, sir.
Thank you, I'd like to thank you, Alderman Boyd, to let me speak during your committee meeting, or presentation. As stated, I am Duke Fakury. I'm chairman of the Board of the Pine Bluff Regional Chamber of Commerce, representing the Board, also our members who are here in attendance, as well as staff and other concerned chamber members. As I said earlier, I want to express my appreciation to allow me to address the council. Last week, we had a special board meeting where we discussed issues in Pine Bluff, and during that meeting, we adopted and passed unanimously two resolutions that I would like to read to the council this evening. The resolutions, as I said, were passed unanimously. I think each of y'all have these resolutions. If you do not, I have copies with me. The entire... The entire Board of Directors' names are listed at the bottom of each resolution to show unification in our decisions, or our recommend, our resolutions. The first one, resolution requesting strict enforcement of municipal building codes and zoning laws, whereas, members of the Pine Bluff Regional Chamber of Commerce have been and are being adversely affected by past non-enforcement of municipal building codes and zoning laws, particularly in the downtown area. Whereas, continued non-exercise of options and remedies of correcting code and zoning violations will perpetuate blight, street closures, declining infrastructure, and overall poor environment of the operation of local taxpaying businesses, particularly in the downtown area. Whereas, the chamber believes the city of Pine Bluff should choose the interest of local taxpaying businesses over the interest of property owners in violation of municipal codes and laws, particularly in the downtown area. Whereas, the chamber believes the city position, on, position on these issues can be best reflected by strictly enforcing municipal building codes and zoning laws, rather than acquiescing in violations of these laws, and that it is imperative to the economic future of the city of Pine, of this city, that such strict, strict enforcement begin immediately. Now, therefore, it be resolved by the Board of the Directors of the Pine Bluff Regional Chamber of Commerce, that the Pine Bluff Regional Chamber of Commerce request immediate strict enforcement of all municipal building codes and zoning laws, and the exercise of every available remedy for any violation of those codes and laws. The second resolution that we adopted, and I want to present, uh, resolution opposing the residency requirement for municipal employees, whereas, in the, in the Pine Bluff Regional Chamber of Commerce and its members have a vested interest in the quality of our local government and the municipal services it provides, and whereas, in furtherance of efficient local government and services, the chamber believes the city of Pine Bluff should hire and retain the best, most capable employees possible, regardless of the employee's residence. Now, therefore, it be resolved by the Board of Directors of the Pine Bluff Regional Chamber of Commerce, that the, that the Pine Bluff Regional Chamber of Commerce requests the city to continue to hire and retain the best, most capable employees, regardless of their residency. Submit those to, to the council. Once again, I do thank you for this opportunity. Don't know the procedure, uh, I was told there might be a question or comment to me, and if there is, I'm prepared to take it.
Okay, I do not see any. Thank you, thank you very much.
Thanks you all for allowing this opportunity.
Okay, does that conclude your report?
That concludes my report, ma'am.
Okay, thank you, sir. Traffic and Aviation, Alderman Holcomb, Jr.
Uh, mayor, I don't have a report, but I do have an update from activities of the month of March from Mr. Doug Hale. He says, "We have just received," this is from the airport in Gra, Pine Bluff, uh, Airport Grotter Field, he says, "We have just received our new Kubota tractor and haul manufacturing bush hog mower. Both items were priced within the forty-five thousand dollar allowance given by the city. We are very pleased to have this, and certainly would not have them without the support of the city council. A bid opening was held on Tuesday, March seventeenth, two thousand and fifteen, regarding the upcoming terminal area asphalt project. The low builder was D and D paving. They are a local company, all bids received were within our budget. We should get started on the project within a month or so. This project is being funded by a grant from the Arkansas Department of Aeronautics." The Black Pilots of America have announced that they will return to Pine Bluff for their operation, Skyhook. This is the nineteenth year that this event has been held in Pine Bluff. We are honored to have them back at Grotter Field and look forward to the, to the, to that event that we withheld during the Memorial Day week, weekend holiday." That is from Mr. Doug Hale, who is the airport manager. And that concludes my report, mayor.
Okay, thank you. Yes, ma'am.
I, uh, just had a comment that I, uh, should have made at the last couple of council meetings, because, uh, with the renaming of the Pine Bluff Aviation Commission, uh, that I gave, uh, the shout-outs to, um, the manager Doug Hale, and that's not where they should have gone, they should have gone to the airport commission. And, and so, I appreciate, uh, what they've done, because I think it adds volume to, uh, the airport, that it's not just, uh, a little insignificant airport. We have great possibilities, so I want to thank, uh, the Aviation Commission for that.
Okay, thank you. All right, administration, Alderman Steps?
Mayor, I don't have a, uh, committee report, but I would like to read an official statement from Mayor Alderman. Over the past couple of weeks, Alderman Bill Brommet has brought a wave of shameful and negative publicity to his body. His racially charged and divisive comments made on social media have divided our community. To refer to any African-American as a coon is not only shameful, it is disgraceful. Based on media report, it is clear that Alderman Brommet has changed his explanation several times. Not only that, Brommet's denial and fabrication amount to lies. Last week, the Pine Bluff branch of the NWAACP asked Alderman Brommet to resign from this council. In support of the local branch, the state branch also joined the call. So far, Brommet has refused their request. A former colleague of ours said it best, "If you utter something, it is not, and it is not recorded, there may be some room for denial." However, in this case, Brommet's racist divisive comments were written. Alderman Lord Holcomb, since the beginning of the year, has warned Brommet and all of us about the use of social media. Alderman, Alderman Holcomb even stated that at some point, social media would bring shame upon this council. The shame arrived in the form of Bill Brommet's coon comments. Brommet at first claimed that the term "Cooningham" was typed because Jimmy Cunningham misspelled his name. A misspelled word, in my opinion, should not cause a person to use a racist slur to get back at someone. It was Brommet who referred to former Bernard, uh, Chief Bernard Davis Jones as a stupid black bee. Also, it was Brommet who called for a white history mark when it was suggested that the council hold a meeting at the University of Arkansas at Pine Bluff to observe black history mark. Brommet, the record shows, has a pattern of lies, deception, and race-baiting when it comes to Pine Bluff African-American community. Moreover, the local newspaper has allowed us to refer to myself and two other council members, stooges and clowns. The record clearly showed that none of us have resorted to name-calling toward any reporter or editorialist who has published an article. In my opinion, that would be childish. At first, Brommet said it was a typo, and then he went on television and claimed that he was insulted by Jimmy Cunningham. Next, he said he offered an apology that was accepted by Cunningham. News reports indicated Cunningham did not accept Brommet's so-called apology. Brommet then went on to say that he misspoke, and that Cunningham acknowledged that he received Brommet's note. From our disgraced council member, it has been lie after lie after lie. I can no longer in clear conscience work with Brommet. I cannot trust anything that he brings to the council. I cannot in clear conscience believe that Brommet has any love or compassion toward African-Americans. I can no longer in clear conscience listen to his lies, deception, of his feeble attempt to speak to issues of fairness. In fact, in NWAACP news conference, Alderman Holcomb said it best, "How can you serve with a man who smiles in your face, then goes behind your back and calls African-Americans derogatory names?" In the words of a great writer, "You can't unhear what you heard." We have heard from Brommet, and we all have heard our lies, fabrications of words of deception. Mayor Hollingworth has informed the general public that she does not condone Brommet's action. Many members of the clergy even spoke from their pulpit on this issue yesterday. A host of our constituents has said that Brommet needs to resign. Several have said that as a council, we should boycott council meetings until Brommet resigns. Then there are those in the community that have suggested a boycott of Brommet's business. I don't speak for the entire council, but I do offer a suggestion. This season, I'm asking that this body to send a vote of no confidence to Brommet with a clear message, racism in any form on the Pine Bluff City Council is unacceptable. And I'd like to go on record of asking this council to vote a no confidence vote in him by roll call.
Are you putting that in the form of a, a motion?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Okay. I guess no discussion is needed here, so could we have roll call, please? Alderman Steps?
Yes.
Alderman Walker?
Yes.
Alderman Boyd?
Aye.
Alderman Brown, Sr.
Yes.
Alderman Maes?
Aye.
Alderman Holcomb?
Aye.
Alderman Brown, Jr.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you. That, that's the end of my report, ma'am. Thank you.
Uh, Public Safety, Alderwoman Walker?
Um, yes, mayor, we, Public Safety did have a meeting, and it was around the budget adjustments that we have already passed as for, is, uh, the police cars and a salary for the police department. And, um, also, uh, we discussed a couple of the items, ordinance number four, uh, that here, um, we got it cleared up as to the fact that it addresses the dumpsters and the containers at apartment complexes. So, that, uh, came out with a, uh, with a due pass vote. And also, number five, uh, there were some issues that we were not, um, completely clear about the legality, uh, first of all, of generating revenue.
Alderwoman Walker, would you mind just one second? Thank...
Okay. I can speak up.
Please, we can hear up here, thank you.
I can speak up. Uh, that, uh, that it was discussed as to the legality of getting, generating funds for the department that you represent in the form of fines, uh, because, you know, that has been an issue over the country, uh, about police officers maybe writing tickets. This not, not our department now, uh, of writing tickets, and the, uh, funds went to their department, and, uh, it was approved to be illegal. Uh, but there again, it doesn't represent Pine Bluff. So, we, uh, we did not give that a due pass to the council. And, um, and number three, uh, was about the storage, um, of the junk and abandoned vehicles and related purposes, and, uh, so it did not receive a due pass, because I think, you know, well, you know, it was, the consensus was that it was too strict and restricted to the owners of vehicles. So, that, you know, came with a no vote. And I think, um, the other report was that crime is down, and to, uh, and I do, um, think that our, you know, police officers are doing a good job. I see them out, and so I wanted to compliment them. And that's the end of my report.
Okay, thank you. Now, Alderman Steps, on to ordinances and resolutions. You're up again.
Uh, ordinance number one. Number two, we'll get to that. Number two, uh, an ordinance amending section two dash fifty-five of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Pine Bluff, Arkansas, regarding the procedure for discussion, debate, and filing of ordinance and resolution for the related purpose, up for the third and final reading.
An ordinance amending section two dash fifty-five of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Pine Bluff, Arkansas, regarding the procedure for discussion, debate, and filing of ordinances and resolutions, and for related purposes.
Move for adoption, second.
It's been properly moved in second, that an ordinance amending section two dash fifty-five of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Pine Bluff, Arkansas, regarding the procedure for discussion, debate, and filing for ordinances and resolutions, and for related purposes. Floor is now open for discussion?
Um, I have one thing I want to say here.
Yes, sir.
Um, and it was brought to my attention that on, let me see where the line here. Uh, let's see, I believe we're on page number two, uh, section two, this line item number fourteen, it says, "All ordinances, resolutions, or any parts thereof which conf..." Let's see, no, 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 that's not the right one, let's see. There is a part where we want to exclude, uh, resolutions from this, instead, instead of just, we wanted to just say ordinances and not the resolutions, basically. What's that, I'm sorry? Line five, okay.
Yes.
Yeah, line five. Um, let's remove, uh, resolution, so I move, uh, that we remove the word "resolution" from line five.
Should just strike it?
Strike it.
Just strike it, is what you're saying?
Right.
Okay. Okay, it's been properly, are we wanting, are you wanting to amend it or just strike Okay, so you're wanting to propose an amendment then, is that what you're saying?
Yes, that'll be fine.
Okay, and it's been second? Alderman Brown, Sr., okay. Uh, it's been properly moved in second, that the, um, ordinance number two be amended to strike out "resolution," and it's been second. Floor is now open for discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye on the amendment?
Aye, aye.
Any opposed? The amendment carries. Now to the ordinance. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor on the ordinance?
They have to move to approve the ordinance, the original as amended.
Okay. I, I thought I just did that.
I move for the original ordinance.
As amended.
As amended.
Second.
Okay, it's been properly moved in second, that the amended, the ordinance as amended be approved. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Um, number three, an ordinance amending sixteen sixteen dash fifty-three of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Pine Bluff, Arkansas, regarding storage of junk, abandoned vehicles, and related purposes, up for the third and final reading.
An ordinance amending section sixteen fifty-three of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Pine Bluff, Arkansas, regarding storage of junked or abandoned vehicles and related purposes.
Move for adoption?
Do we have a second? No second?
It's fair for like a second.
Right, okay.
Number four, an ordinance amending section sixteen dash three of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Pine Bluff to address waste accumulation around dumpsters and containers, up for the third and final reading.
An ordinance amending section sixteen dash three of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Pine Bluff, Arkansas, to address waste accumulation around dumpsters and containers.
Move for adoption?
Okay, it's been properly moved in second, that an ordinance amending section sixteen dash three of the Code of the Ordinances of the City of Pine Bluff, Arkansas, to address waste accumulation around dumpsters and containers. Floor is now open for discussion?
I have, um...
Yes, ma'am.
Now, am, um, am I to understand that this is, uh, clearly for apartments? Am I correct?
Yeah. I'm thinking of where it reads right now, it's not, it's basically applying to anyone. If you look at, um, let's say, line twenty, it says, "No..."
No person.
"...person who owns, uses, or controls a trash container or dumpster shall suffer, permit, or cause a trash container or dumpster to be filled or overflow the top edges." So, from that, it looks to me as if that's including anyone. And so, uh, if, if the intent of the ordinance is for it to be strictly for apartment owners, then I think that we need to put that in the language to be more clear.
Is that in section twenty, uh, line twenty-three?
No. Actually, I think, uh, that it may be better that if it was rewritten and brought back to us, uh, because it's so many line items in there that refers to owners and managers. Uh, well, of course, number twenty-three, it said, "Owners and managers of apartment complexes," and, uh, and managers as well as tenants.
Why, it's muscles.
Because here, uh, number like twenty-seven, it says, "The owner and manager, as well as the tenant or occupant of such an apartment." So, then there, again, that puts it back on the... So, then there, again, that puts it back on the tenant with the apartment that resides in.
Well, I think the original language is for the tenant to have some responsibility, but I think the problem was the owner of the complex itself had no liability to any type of violations. So, I think they added the owner into it, but what I was worried about is individuals, just individual homeowners were being put inside of this as well.
Right. Right. But there, again, if we, if it was passed this way, well, then you put the fine part on the tenant and the owner. But if you have the owner responsible, well, then the owner, even if they had to hire somebody, that they would make sure that it was kept clean because otherwise you put it as the tenant and then you, the fine for the tenant is fifty dollars or more, not more than three hundred dollars. So, I think it's kind of badly written, actually.
Alderman Holcomb?
Alderman Mays, I see you sponsoring this. When you put this ordinance together, were you targeting apartment complexes or were you targeting apartment complexes and residential?
Well, no, just the apartment complexes.
Okay.
That's the whole key. The rest of that was added in. That was my initial, we need to focus on the apartment complexes. They really are a mess. The trash cans all over the place and you can see it around town. And then when I looked at it, that's the focus with the apartment complex. I don't see how one apartment complex can have fifteen trash cans outside. So, it should be more tailored toward the apartment. Now, I would look at the fines as well. We can, just the apartment complex, we can still keep the fines the same toward the apartment complex, but I wouldn't want to charge an individual these fines. That wouldn't be right. That'd be another tax on you for trash cans.
So.
That's why I said the way that is written, it's hard to really separate it because on line twenty-seven, it says owner and manager as well as the tenant are occupant of such apartment or multiple family housing unit. So, I think maybe if it is going to, maybe it need to be rewritten and brought back to the council.
One of the things that there.
Your inconsistencies in here as for who is responsible.
One of the areas that you run into, apartment complexes is number one, but then also you'll see homes, single-family homes, where they are rental. And you'll see at times where they just dump all the trash out front. Then they'll say, "Who's responsible for this?" Well, it has to go back to the landowner, the owner of that property. Somebody has to be responsible for getting rid of the mattresses and all of the other trash that's left out front of the house. So, single-family or owner, some way that's got to be in the language for rental units as well. You've got to have teeth for that as well. Because I passed down one today on thirtieth, I believe it was, and they just left the house and it's just stuff everywhere.
But sometime that it is on the owner and then sometimes that waste management is not picking things up the way it should be. Because I've seen couches and mattresses and things like that that was left in front of houses forever as well as leaves. Because I had intended to call today on West Ninth, it's leaves that have laid there all summer long and it's about nineteen bags of them. And so, it's not all sometime on the owner or the tenant. It's on waste management. Sometime you have to call and tell them where it is, but they should have a system where that in there picking up regular trash that if they see something need to be picked up, that the driver should take that responsibility. I know we can't dictate that to them, but we can call in to them. But I think it's, I'm speaking for myself.
I think where we're trying to get this too is that if it is an owner renting a house, the owner has got to have oversight and responsibility. So, if the trash is left out front then and waste management has not picked it up, then they need to be the responsible ones in picking, making sure that waste management does pick it up. So, there's got to be some oversight there. There's not now, and we've got to have that, a law to enforce that part of it.
And I think it could be if this was rewritten because the way it is now, that it doesn't cover, I think, the part that needs to be covered.
I want to bring up Deputy Chief Powell. Do you have anything to say on this?
Again, the reason for this is not targeted, even though there may, just like the mayor just gave you an example, of a residential house that's being rented. What some of these folks are doing is going in there and cleaning out every single thing they got in the house and making a big mess and it's a blight to the community. The only things that we're trying to address is to make the City of Pine Bluff look better. When you've got people driving down main thoroughfares in our city and there's trash blowing all across neighborhoods, we've got people calling about the trash blowing into their yards. I mean, we got daily calls about these situations and there's nothing we can do to the owner. It just doesn't quite seem fair to me. Whenever you've got people that are charging rent to people and they're not the ones responsible for keeping that parking lot clean and that trash blowing out into the streets, it just doesn't seem fair to go and ticket the tenants. That right now is all we can do. And we were trying to get something that would be more fair. Because a lot of times, you know, these apartment complexes, the property owners and the property managers are bringing debris over to these apartments and getting rid of debris that didn't even come from the apartment complexes. And then, so it's not fair to hold the tenants responsible and only them. Sometimes it may be just them, but right now, we have nothing and absolutely nothing to address this with the owner. And we've called them in in our safety meetings and asked them to comply and they're basically the ones with, you know, that we've talked to, we're not getting compliance.
Deputy Chief Powell, on that, I agree with you as for as the complex are concerned, but it also says tenants. And, you know, because even if, if the apartment complex manager, if they have to comply, well, then it may be that they would have to spend a few extra dollars to hire somebody to come every day or every other day to kind of clean up around there and make sure that things are done. So, they may need to hire what you would say a outside janitor to keep it clean, and I think that that would be fair. But for the tenants, you know, you would have to identify which tenants it is. And I guess you would do that maybe by the number on the dumpster. And then that may not be fair either because someone out of apartment eight, you know, sixteen may dump it in eight-twenty.
And that, your point's well taken, Ms. Walker, and that is the point. Right now, if anybody gets a citation, it's going to be the tenant.
But if, but what I'm saying is that if eight-twenty is not filling their dumpster or dumping it out, well, then eight-twenty would be getting the ticket when maybe that they weren't responsible for what was put in their trash can.
Yes, ma'am.
See what I'm saying?
Yes, ma'am. I see what you're saying. That's why we want to hold the property owner or the property manager, whoever that property owner may appoint, responsible for that. That's exactly.
Well, I think we are saying the same thing.
Yes, ma'am.
But that's why I said if we taking the tenant out and put it back on the owner because the owner or the manager, because if the owner or the manager get a ticket, then they would start making sure that everything was done proper and in order. You see what I'm saying?
Yes.
So, that part I could appreciate.
Is it for the apartment complex? Is it for the apartment complexes or the individual units?
Apartment complex.
Now, they could use trash bags for a lot of this. It should be a way for them to put it all in the trash bags and put it out there.
Well, we can't dictate where they put their trash in a trash bag before they take it out. It would be great, but we can't tell them that they must take, put their trash in a trash bag.
Okay. Well, as a sponsor.
I do have, if you want to see it, I've got the slideshow. So, it's there if y'all want to see it. The reason we brought this to you guys.
Because, and you know, as I said.
Maybe two minutes at the max.
Two minutes?
Do you get, go in there and get Eddie and tell him to come out here and get this set up. I'll keep taking questions.
I think a lot of us see it on a daily basis.
It's not set up?
Yes, sir. It's ready. He's just got to turn it on.
Two minutes or less?
It's probably not two minutes. It's about ten pictures, all it is.
But the problem is the tenant, I mean. We can, we work it, Joe. Can we work it to take the tenants out? Well, Alderman Brown is the sponsor too, so I would have just pulled it. I don't make it, you know. I could. Well, if we can pull the tenant out, I think that would help.
Let me ask you this. If y'all want to, I'm not, I mean, we need this done so bad. If we need to sit down and have another conversation, so all the, yeah, go ahead and turn that on for me, Eddie. I'm not beyond that because all three of these legislations that were brought, there's a terrible need for it. I mean, these, there's a lot of stuff going on that I see every day. I wanted to bring this to you guys' attention because y'all are the ones that can make a difference to the citizens. The citizens are the ones complaining to us and that's why we're bringing it to y'all.
I understand, but you know, I think the suggestion that you made is a good idea that we get together at first and get something that we could pass.
Just like.
Because I think we're all for helping you out. Because it was helping us out because it affects us all. And so, I think that would be a good idea.
This particular, this particular house, without giving an address, we had numerous complaints from the neighborhood and you can see why. That's the backyard of the same house. And in all fairness to that person, we didn't just go in there and say we're going to issue a citation. We said, "How long do you need to clean this up?" He told us twenty days. We went back, he had made an effort to start and we give him another ten days and he's made a lot of progress. There's one of the cars, you know, it's just, just all kind of stuff underneath there. I mean, those are legitimate things that we get calls about.
Do you have anything about the apartment complex?
Yes, sir. It's coming. It's coming. It's right after that. There we go. Keep, just keep hitting it. There you go.
Oh, that stove.
That's what they dumped right beside the dumpster.
But see, that's where I was saying that if these apartment complex.
Keep going, Eddie.
Managers had people that worked for them to make sure things was.
Well, they actually do, believe it or not. Now, that's right there on the main thoroughfare where everybody's got to come through and see that. Keep going.
That was a windy day, though.
I don't think the wind could have blown them over. They were full.
Okay. We need to focus more on the apartment complexes. What I'm going to do is ask Joe and Athiel to move it, see if we can condense it down to the apartment complex. See, you want to pull it? Does that sound? Right. Yeah, we'll pull it.
Okay.
We're going to get back.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Eddie.
Thank you.
Then who won?
Thank you.
We need to withdraw the second in the motion then? Okay.
I don't know who seconded.
I seconded.
Mays seconded it and.
I withdraw the second.
Okay. And who made the motion? Okay. All right. You withdraw your motion?
Yes. Number five, an ordinance assessing administrative fee to be assessed and added to every lien levied in the course of the city remediating nuisance property providing for the use of funds generated by the collection of the fee and for related purposes up for the third and final reading.
An ordinance assessing an administrative fee to be assessed and added to every lien levied in the course of the city remediating nuisance property, providing for the use of funds generated by the collection of the fee and for related purposes.
Move for adoption.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Thank you. It's been properly moved in second that an ordinance assessing an administrative fee to be assessed and added to every lien levied in the course of the city remediating nuisance property, providing for use of the funds generated by the collection of the fee and for related purposes. Floor is now open for discussion.
Mayor, I had just spoken to the city attorney because I was concerned, I was watching CNN as always to do, and there were places, there was a question about, in fact, it wasn't just a question, it was a question and an answer about a department could not issue tickets to generate funds that that department would use. And so, and this is the same instance, same scenario as whether it's legal or not to issue citations for, that goes into a department that benefits you.
Okay.
I agree with that.
Yes, sir.
I agree with that also. If you issue those tickets, it should go into a certain fund, more or less general fund. I don't know where it would make sense to allow a department to use monies where they conjured their money themselves. Because I would definitely make sure I conjure a whole lot of money, so.
Okay.
I don't think that is a good way to do it. I think it ought to go into wherever the other monies are going and then budget time, you do what you got to for budget time.
Deputy Chief Powell, would you like to make a comment on this?
I'd just like to clear up. These are not citations. These are not citations. What this is, is administrative fees, which are legal. I've already asked Joe before we did this. And matter of fact, Jonesboro is where we got this idea. Jonesboro administers not a hundred dollar administrative fee, but a four hundred dollar administrative fee every time they do something. What the administrative fee is, basically encompasses, when we send code enforcement officers out, let's say a vacant lot hasn't been mowed, okay? Then when the vacant lot has not been mowed, all that's charged to that person is whatever the bid is for the contract. So, it's, you're getting free lawn service, basically, and the city's managing your property. What the administrative fee covers is the man-hours that we have to spend sending out to monitor these properties and then to get in the bid process done. It's administrative fee. It's not a ticket written. So, I just wanted to clear that up.
Well.
Yes, sir.
I would not agree with this because you, the city cut one of my lots and it was this high. I would not agree with this under no circumstances that you were allowed to give an administrative fee. Right now, you're saying a hundred dollars, that'd be a hundred fifty next year and a two hundred dollars next year. No, I would definitely be against that. And probably everybody that own land would be against it. You just probably had to find a different way to get it. You cannot get it through administration. I would not approve that at all. I mean, that's not fair to the landowner. It's just not going to be fair. If you bid on that, then that's what they pay. You want everybody to pay, not keep my lot cut this low now because it was this high and they went out there and cut it one time. I was upset. And what on this administration? And I had to pay it and I was upset about it. But I would not add an administrative fee to a person that own that land. I couldn't do that under no circumstances. It's just, no, it's just, it's not, it's not right.
Alderman Holcomb?
Can we hear from the city attorney on what?
I advised Ms. Walker, she mentioned it to me right, I guess during this meeting, and I told her that I would be glad to write an opinion as it relates to that. She shared the story. I'd be glad. I advised Ms. Walker, she mentioned it to me right, I guess during this meeting, and I told her that I would be glad to write an opinion as it relates to that, she shared the story, I'd be glad to write an opinion, so if the council wishes to just table this until I've had an opportunity to research it, then we can come back next council meeting as it relates to this.
That's what she said, she said, because she wasn't aware of it before.
Is that the consensus with the council? Okay, then we need to pull our second in motion?
Always wondered, we need to make a motion to do it.
Well, first, withdraw your.
We have to withdraw the motion, the second in motion, okay. Yes, sir.
Who, who did, you spoke to?
Yes, sir.
Joe?
Yes, sir. But Jo- like I said, Jonesboro's the one giving me, I mean, but she's gonna research it, but there is a state law that regards it, so.
I think another thing, and I just wanna talk on it, that I guess what happens is, maybe certain, certain owners or certain property owners maybe, I guess, you know, looked at more so than others, and I think maybe we need to find some type of guideline on how we're applying this administrative fee if we decided to do it, I just don't, you know, you don't wanna go after the same property owner four or five times a year, and then you have another property owner that you never ever, you know, touch, so I think we need to have a guideline on how we're gonna apply it, and how often it would be applied to a, to a property owner too, so, oh, there you are. You know, I just think that's, that should be somewhere in there, cause I think sometimes, you know, a person may feel a little picked on if every year they receive a tax lien for a hundred dollars, you know, and they don't have a chance to get out there and, and tend to their property, so I think maybe we should have some type of guideline there too, so.
Well, part of the problem is, is you have a lot of landowners that live outside the city limits, and they, we get numerous complaints of yards growing up, and so there's got to be a way in which the property owner will be responsible in hiring a service, or whatever it may be, and taking care of their own property. And you've got to have a deterrent some way, and it's, last year almost got a control, it was really bad, of course, it was a wet year last year, too.
I agree we should do something, but I just don't want it to be a situation where, you know, what happens is, is once a person gets on the radar, then every year, they're, they're the automatic target, and I don't want that to be a situation where every year, I know I'm gonna, you know, if it, two weeks of grass grows up, now you're coming after me every, every year, and I think we need to have a, a better way of doing it, you know.
Alderman Steps?
Mayor, I think what has been happening in the past, we'll get one contractor to come in there with some outrageous low bids, and bid on twenty-five or thirty pieces of property, knowing that he can't cut them in the time period that's given, we have a, a ordinance that's on the books, that says if that contractor has not cut that lot within five days, it needs to be removed from him, and because we have not enforced it, now you drive through, and some of these lots and things, and they grow up, and they say, well, we assign them to the contractor, but when is he gonna get to them? And that's what has created this problem, we need to make sure that these enforcements are adhered to, if a contractor have not gotten to a lot within that five-day grace period, then we need to remove it to another contractor, then that way you could eliminate some of these fees that you were talking about charging, if we do the things on the front end like we're supposed to do.
Then maybe that contractor should be removed from the eligible list, because then you've got to go out and make sure, you're doing double duty to make sure that the contractor mowed the yard.
Well, that's what it calls for.
Yeah, yeah.
If he doesn't do it in five days, that's what the enforcement ought to be about, is that within five days that this lot has been assigned, because you got your paperwork there to show it, if it has not been cut within five days, like the, like the contract states, then you should remove it from that contractor.
Yeah, eligibility list, yes, sir.
I know we're gonna do something else with it, so we're probably just talking premature or whatever, however, if a contractor bids on it, does the city have a special fee for him, for that, after the bid? Does the city have a fee, say I know R and R contractor, and he's gonna contract to cut the grass, does the city get some of that money? So now I'm trying to figure out, why do we need to pay an administrative fee for that, if the contract goes in and bid on that, on that, all the city wants is a clean city, cut grass, so why do we need to make money on a contract? Why do we need to make money on that? I, are you with me? Why do we need to make money on, if the grass is on thirteen and fed, needs cutting? And the owner doesn't cut it, and the city sees it, and he go and cut that lot, turn it in, he gets paid for it when you pay your taxes, cause that's what, you know, why does the city need to make money? All the city's trying to do is make the city look good, you can't make money on everything that the city does. You can't do that, if the city does the work itself, then you get paid for, for cutting the lot, and at that point, you, you've cut out some of your contracts, because if the city goes, and I understand that we did that with the Quarter Light Division, we bought wheat and lawn mowers and all that, so we're cutting out the contracts, I'm saying, why does the city need to make money on making it look good? If the contractor is, is, he's gone to a, a session where he made bids to do these lots, then why is it that the city need to make, all the interest of the city is that, is that lot is cut, why do they need to make money? I'm trying to figure that part out.
Well, I think what has to happen, we have to go through another step in the process, what has been happening, if they remove from the contractor, the lot is still grown up, so the city, the people own the city, so we have to go out and do something, so either you don't send it to another contractor, or the city, we're gonna end up having to go out there and cut it, and what they're saying is that we can't cut it, we can't charge them more than ten percent of whatever that bid contract was, and as a result of it, it's costing the city a lot of money to go back and forth and mail out these notices, you have to mail them out certified, and I think that's what they're talking about, the administrative part of it, but I think if we follow the process through, we could eliminate some of the administrative costs, but you won't eliminate it all, because some of them is not gonna respond to you, I don't care what you do.
Well, let me say this, though, what we need, we need to have the bidder to pay a certain fee to the city, then in his bid, he gonna put that in his bid, which may be ten, fifteen, twenty, thirty, whatever, but I don't think it oughta go back on the landowner, you gonna charge him per, 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 uh, yard of, of his lot, you know, you's gonna, you're gonna charge him, say, look, this lot costs fifty-five dollars to cut, or seventy-five dollars to cut.
I don't wanna make it sound like our enforcers are out there just trying to rip the people off for money, I think if we are out there, and you see the way some of these landowners are doing, and especially when they're out there, I think we got to have something with some teeth in it, because we're gonna constantly get these complaints from the citizens, and I don't think we ought to allow a contractor to bid on thirty lots, knowing that he ain't gonna cut no thirty lots within five days, and I think that's what the problem is.
I, I've got a question, did, did we not table this one?
We did.
Okay. Okay, I'm just a little confused here.
I thought you opened it back up.
No, sir.
I said it when I started talking.
No, sir.
Let's table it.
Okay, let's, let's table this one, okay.
Now, let it go.
We've already pulled anything, so, okay, number.
The motion needs to be withdrawn, and then, okay, and now we need a motion to table the.
We need a motion to table it.
Okay.
So move.
Okay, motion has been made in second that we table the ordinance assessing administrative fee to be assessed and added to every lien levied in the course of the city remediating nuisance property, providing for the use of the funds generated by the collection of the fee and for related purposes, thank you.
Thank you. On six.
Vote, sorry, vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Any, any noes? Okay, thank you.
Sheriff, out next, six, seven, eight, nine, and ten, all up for the first reading, could I ask the attorney just read the title only? Can I get a motion?
I'll second that, and we, and we read them entirety on the second reading.
Okay.
Okay, a motion in a second for number six, seven, and eight, six, seven, eight, nine, and ten? Okay, to retitle only?
Yes.
It's been second, any discussion? Hearing done, all in favor say aye. We, we've got someone in the back here, Lakeisha?
Yes, yes, we'll meet on fourteenth at ten a.m., on that particular item.
Since that's brought up, can I make a note?
Yes, sir.
Uh, that's an election day, and I'm the new election chairman, and the commission chairman, and that's definitely a conflict, we'll be able to get there, is there any chance of a different date?
That's our normally meeting day is on that particular Tuesday.
That's the school board election, and I'm the chairman of that commission.
But, uh, but we've heard what you said tonight, Mr. Adams, Adam, is that right?
Yes.
Adam, then we would, uh, address those issues in our meeting.
Would it be all right if I give you my card, and you show me, and we could discuss it?
Sure.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, mayor.
And, uh, mayor.
No, we have not voted yet.
Mr. Adams, if, when it comes back for the second reading, you will be able to come back for that, right? Okay, because it was, it was put out there, but some of, I want you to know that some of us do feel your pain.
Thank you very much.
Okay, we have got discussion going on, any other comments? Hearing done, all in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
So now you just gotta read the title only?
Yes. Number six.
Is he gonna read it first?
Oh, okay, Alderman Steps, you're up.
Number, that was number six.
She has to read it, and then she repeats it.
You gotta read the title.
Right, oh. An ordinance requiring the council approval of any modification or change in order in the amount of five thousand dollars or more in the contract and related purpose. Move for it, Cal.
Up for the first reading?
Yeah.
An ordinance requiring council approval of any modification or change order in the amount of five thousand dollars or more in a contract and related purposes.
Move for adoption?
You place it on calendar.
Place it on calendar.
Well, well, I feel like we, we need to send it to a committee.
That's what he's gonna do, he'll assign it to a committee.
Okay, okay.
Yes. Alderman Steps, you wanna sign that too?
Now, just go to.
Administration?
Administration, oh, yeah, this'll go to my committee, we'll, we'll have the, uh, the, the Thursday before the third reading, what day is that, on sixteen?
You got one coming up this Thursday, don't you, administration? It's coming Thursday? Okay. That's the sixth?
Uh, tomorrow's seventh, we got one coming up on the, uh, sixteen.
Okay. All right. Okay, number seven?
An ordinance requiring the city council to be provided a monthly report of gasoline and maintenance expenditure for city vehicles.
An ordinance requiring the city council to be provided a monthly report of gasoline and maintenance expenditures for city vehicles.
Based on the calendar, uh, that would go to public safety? Ways and Means, we'll send, we'll take this up in Ways and Means. Number eight, an ordinance authorizing issuance of a short-term financing instrument pursuant to amendment seventy-eight for acquisition of equipment and property for municipal use and for related purposes.
An ordinance authorizing issuance of a short-term financing instrument pursuant to the amendment seventy-eight for acquisition of equipment and property for municipal use and for related purposes.
Place it on the calendar.
On this one.
Oh, yes, ma'am, this right, yeah. Go ahead, we'll read this one three times tonight. I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rule for the second.
Okay, it's been properly moved in second to suspend the rules and place ordinance authorizing issuance of a short-term financing instrument pursuant to amendment seventy-eight for acquisition of equipment and property for municipal use and for related purposes, floor is now open for discussion? Hearing none, may we have roll call, please?
Alderman Steps?
Wait, wait.
I would like to be added to, to this ordinance.
Have we moved to suspend the rules and put on the second reading?
Yes, that's what we're doing now.
Okay, and then, let me go ahead and read it, we can read it the last time, or the.
Okay, we'll do that on the last one.
Wait till the last time, okay, all right. I'll read it the last time.
Okay, we need to have roll call, please, for suspended rules, place it on.
Alderman Steps?
Yes.
Alderman Walker? Alderman Boyd?
Aye.
Alderman Brown Senior?
Aye.
Alderman Mays? Alderman Hockem?
Aye.
Alderman Brown Junior?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Move the suspended rules, put the ordinance on the third and final reading?
Second.
Okay, it's been properly moved in second to suspend the rules, place the ordinance on third reading, authorizing issuance of short-term financing instrument pursuant to amendment seventy-eight for acquisition of equipment and property for municipal use and related purposes, floor is now open for discussion? Hearing none, may we have roll call, please?
Alderman Steps?
Aye.
Alderman Walker? Alderman Boyd?
Aye.
Alderman Brown Senior?
Aye.
Alderman Mays? Alderman Hockem?
Aye.
Alderman Brown Junior?
Aye.
Thank you, motion passes.
Whereas the city's police department is in need of new patrol vehicles with a useful life in excess of one year, and whereas the most efficacious, I guess, means to finance acquisition of the desired vehicles is through the issuance of a short-term financing instrument pursuant to ACA section fourteen seventy-eight, one oh one at sequence, and amendment seventy-eight of the Arkansas Constitution, and whereas the equipment to be acquired is police vehicles for the police department, and the cause of which will be established by competitive bidding, and whereas Simmons First National Bank has submitted the lowest, most responsible proposal to provide the financing to acquire the vehicles, and whereas, by, whereas approval by the city council is needed to authorize the issuance of the short-term debt instrument, now therefore be it ordained by the city council of the City of Pampas of Arkansas, section one, there is hereby authorized the issuance of a short-term financial instrument pursuant to ACA fourteen seventy-eight, one oh one, at sequence, in the principal amount of two hundred and seventy thousand dollars, for a term of three years, and bearing interest at a rate of one point seven nine per annum, to finance acquisition of police patrol vehicles with a useful life exceeding one year. Section two, the mayor's authorized to sign and the city clerk to attest the mayor's signature and seal the debt instrument, and to do all needed acts to complete the issuance and delivery of the debt instrument to the bank. Section three, the debt instrument shall bear the notation that the debt instrument is issued under the authority of amendment seventy-eight, and of the Arkansas Constitution and ACA fourteen seventy-eight, one oh one and following. Section four, any ordinance or part thereof in conflict with this ordinance is hereby repealed to the extent of the conflict. Section five, this ordinance not being of general or permanent nature, it need not be published and shall take effect upon its adoption.
All right.
Did we get an emergency clause? I mean.
That's what I was just looking at, is number, section five, does it address that? Okay. It does. Okay.
And I wanted to add my name to this.
Okay, add Ms. Walker's name to it. All right, yes, sir.
I was just wondering if they're gonna.
Move for adoption?
Okay. Has it been second?
Yeah.
Second.
Second, thank you, um, it's been properly moved in second that an ordinance authorizing issuance of a short-term financing instrument pursuant to an amendment seventy-eight for acquisition of equipment and property for municipal use and for related purposes, floor is now open for discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, I'm getting tongue-tied reading that one.
Number nine, an ordinance providing for the rezoning of certain territory in the City of Pampas of Arkansas.
It takes a.
It, it was already in there, yeah.
An ordinance providing for the rezoning of certain territory in the City of Pampas of Arkansas.
Based on the calendar. Yeah, that'll go to the development plan and Alderman Boyd. Number ten, an ordinance amended section twenty-nine dash two of the Code of Ordinance for the City of Pampas of Arkansas. Number ten, an ordinance amending section twenty-nine dash two of the code of ordinance for the city of Pine Bluff regarding outdoor displays of merchandise.
An ordinance amending section twenty-nine dash two of the code of ordinances for the city of Pine Bluff regarding outdoor displays of merchandise.
Based on the calendar, they go back to Alderman Boyd's committee. Number eleven, a resolution establishing a joint city-county task force on downtown revitalization and development.
Whereas, the need for revitalization of downtown Pine Bluff and for new development is apparent. And whereas, as a majority of the residents of Jefferson County live in Pine Bluff and a vi- and vi- and a vibrant downtown area would benefit all county residents. And whereas, city and county government should work together to formulate strategies for the downtown area. Now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the city of Pine Bluff, Arkansas, section one, there is established a ten-person task force consisting of five members appointed by the city council of Pine Bluff and the remaining members appointed by the Jefferson County Quorum Court. Section two, the task force is charged with formulating strategies for revitalization and development of downtown Pine Bluff and make recommendations to the respecting governing bodies for what actions each might take to accomplish the objectives. Section three, the task, task force should meet as soon as possible after its members are appointed to organize itself. All city departments are directed to cooperate with the task force in the performance of its functions.
Aye. My problem with this. As a city council, we can't enforce that on the county. And I don't think we ought to be making a resolution here that includes them as far as any decisions has to be made concerning this process. So I, I think we ought to pull this, uh, Alderman May, because I don't, I don't think we could do that. And I'm not in favor of doing that. I can't support it.
I agree.
Well, you wanna go ahead and call for a motion for discussion, or we wanna, what, what do you want to do with it?
Just call for the vote then.
Okay.
All right, well, let me...
Pardon me? Right, still no motion to adopt?
Oh.
Okay.
For adoption?
Second.
Okay, it's been properly moved in second that a resolution establishing a joint city-county task force on downtown revitalization and development. Floor is now open for discussion.
Well, I mean, I understand that, but some of the, we had a meeting at, at the Quorum Court room, uh, a few weeks ago, and some of the justices of the peace asked if we can work together. And I met with, uh, County Judge Dutch King as well, and he, he's offered some of his equipment to help downtown. Now, we have equipment as well. A lot of our equipment is still just as clean and shiny. It, it's not dirty like it's supposed to be. And what he's offering is to work together with some members of the community. It's always good to have more people working in, in one area in one unit. Personally, I feel that if we had another task force of, of more people with, with thinking minds and looking at the, the whole situation downtown a lot better. We ought to have some people down there doing that for the last twenty years. And we still in, in the same shape that we were when I was a child. Downtown has, the, the mortar is coming away from around the brick. The bricks are still in good shape, pretty much. Now, we need to have, once again, they've asked to use equipment to see what we can do to work together. I mean, the county and the city should have been working together years ago. Now, that's all I got to say about this, and, and we can vote up or down.
What, what I wanna say on this is, I understand where you're coming from with it, but instead of having a, um, task force that we appoint members to, I think we need to meet with the county, uh, the, the mayor, the county judge, the city council, and the, uh, justices of the peace. We all may need to sit at the table and, and try to figure out what we can do, instead of appointing mi- members who will come back and report to us what they've talked about in the meeting that they may or may not be able to do. I think we need to have a meeting of the minds, you know, with us and them, and we can sit down and discuss what equipment we have and what resources we have available. Um, I think that would be a better, uh, solution to what we have going on, 'cause if we form another committee, we just have, you know, more people that we have to...
I understand, I understand, but you can have the justices of the peace and the Alderman on, on the same committee, which we're all leaders in the community. And that's really what, the reason that people elected us, because we're leaders. We all claim to have degrees, we all claim to have experience in this and that. Let's do it. I mean, let's show it. Don't just be meeting up here every two weeks just to be meaty.
That's a great idea. It's a great...
I, I think that we've, right, at this particular point, I think we're getting the cart before the horse. With, with the Simmons proposal, we don't know what the consultant's gonna be bringing to the table. And I think that we need to know what that is going to entail before we just assign a task force. Uh, because I think that you're gonna need to bring downtown development, you're gonna need to bring a, a lot of other entities to this. And it's not, you know, um, the, the county doesn't enforce any city codes. And so, uh, I don't know if you're crossing efforts there or not, but I think you're getting the cart before the horse.
Well, you said what I was going to say.
Oh, sorry.
If y'all wanna put it to vote, we could go and vote it down. I, I, I think the consensus of the group that we don't need this. So move.
Okay, um, all in favor say aye.
Now, what we, ayeing for?
We're ayeing for this?
No, no.
Oh, you're, 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 okay. All opposed, say, okay. Okay, motion fails.
We got a, a resolution appointing Lakeisha Hill to the non-uniformed employees retirement board.
Whereas, the resignation of Jeff Gaston has left the employee-at-large position vacant on the retirement board for non-uniformed employees. And whereas, it is the desire of the mayor and city council that a non-administrative employee-at-large serve on the board. And whereas, the non-uniformed employees have by-elections selected Lakeisha Hill to serve in this position. And it is the desire of the mayor and the city council to appoint Lakeisha Hill to fill said vacancy. Now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the city of Pine Bluff, Arkansas, that the appointment of Lakeisha Hill to the non-uniformed employees retirement board as an at, at large, as an employee-at-large for a three-year term hereby approved and confirmed.
Move for adoption?
Second.
Uh, it's been properly moved in second that a resolution appointing Lakeisha Hill to the non-uniformed employees retirement board. Um, floor is now open for discussion.
Mayor, maybe, uh, Ms. Hill is in the back, maybe she could come up so the employees, or, or people here that did not know who is appointed to this retirement board. They can get a quick, oh, a quick look at her. She doesn't have to say anything, just come up front so they'll know who you are.
Uh, she's gonna shoot Alderman Steps.
Okay. You don't have to speak if you want to, just say thanks, okay.
Thank you.
That was a, that was a good vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Mayor, just the end of the ordinance.
Thank you, sir. Um, with no further business, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Meeting is adjourned. We do have, um, I know y'all are wanting to stretch, right? We have one, two, three, four, five people that have signed up for non-agenda items. And, um... The first person is Jaclyn Reams. Ms. Jaclyn Reams? Is she here? No? Okay. Ms. Donna Cunningham? Yes, ma'am, please come up. Ms. Cunningham, you have three minutes, please.
My name is Donna Cunningham, and I am here to read a statement from my son, Jimmy Cunningham. Because of the time constraints, I'm reading a condensed version of this document. But the council, the newspaper, and NAACP will receive the detailed version. And I have a few copies for citizens, if you like. To Mayor Hollinsworth, city council members, and the citizens of my hometown of Pine Bluff. My name is Jimmy Cunningham, Jr. I recently had a Facebook exchange with Alderman Bill Brummett in which I was referred to with a form of the racial slur, "coon." While I would like to be here to speak on my own behalf, I live out of state, and I won't be in Pine Bluff until later this week. I want to specifically address Mr. Brum- Brummett's apology in keeping with Mayor Hollinsworth's expressed desire to move beyond this issue. Hence, I am offering my response to his apology along with my reasoning. If healing is to occur in Pine Bluff, it can only happen in the context of forgiveness and truth. Biblical scriptures suggest that followers must forgive offenses as many times as they occur. At the same time, scriptures state that those who seek forgiveness must do so with the spirit of true contrition. Having carefully weighed the actions and deeds of Mr. Brummett, I am prepared to offer forgiveness to him for his actions surrounding this unfortunate set of circumstances. However, let me be clear, I am not offering forgiveness on the basis of Mr. Brummett's apology, which I believe, after a review of the facts, is not built on contrition, but on public damage control, as evidenced by the five detailed points included in this letter. I am offering forgiveness, rather, based on my conclusion that Mr. Brummett knowingly, deliberately, and intentionally used a form of the term "coon" in his reference to me. I am offering forgiveness to Mr. Brummett for deliberately fabricating key facts about my communication with him in order to make his public explanation palatable. I am offering forgiveness to Mr. Brummett for distorting my family name and creating an association with the racial slur, which will be implanted in the minds of many for years to come. I'm offering forgiveness to Mr. Brummett for language which not only attacked me, but which also attacked all African-Americans and others of conscience who were reminded of a painful time when such vicious slurs were used without recourse. I am prepared to dialogue with Mr. Brummett personally, so we may better facilitate community healing, and so he may be better positioned to acknowledge a more truthful accounting of his actions. Forgiveness works hand in hand with truth. However, Mr. Brummett should understand that because hurling a racial slur is an offense against a people and not just a single person. He will need to reach out to many others in the community. Mr. Brummett should also be reminded that while people are individually charged by biblical scripture with forgiving him, they are not charged by biblical scripture with electing him or maintaining him in his political capacity. Forgiveness does not negate political responsibility. I sincerely hope to see this community take whatever actions it deems necessary to deal with this issue in order to heal. Thank you for all your time and attention to this matter. Thank you so much for those who have been praying and offering words of support during this ordeal. We appreciate you so very much, Jimmy Cunningham, Jr.
Thank you.
I have copies that I'm going to distribute, or give to the mayor, and a copy to the, uh, Pine Bluff commercial. And also a copy of... Statement made at the, um... A statement that was made at the, uh, press conference last Tuesday.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Sebastian? Stargill, did I say that right? Oh, okay. Thank you, sir.
It's, uh, Stargill to all the baseball people.
I got you, okay. You have three minutes, sir.
All right. I, uh, came here because I have a concern about, uh, Townsend Park. I went out to the baseball fields, uh, when I was off, uh, school Friday, and I kinda walked through and evaluated the fields, the dugouts, and the whole facility. I was disappointed when I left. And I feel like that the people or the person who was responsible for doing our fields has done a half job. I can almost see the same things going on here that went on at U of B B's field. See, when you don't have baseball people involved in doing, uh, the work on it or, or doing a project on the field, you, you start to have, uh, mishaps. There shouldn't be a baseball field, a college baseball field with no lights. But somebody built the field with no baseball lights. That should have been the first thing that went up. The lights go first, dugouts go second, stands go third, field go last. We got a college baseball field that has no lights. It was because we had non-baseball people that was doing it. And I'm seeing the same thing over here at Townsend Park. I go in the dugout where I got anywhere from twenty to twenty-five kids, and they got a bench that only holds maybe ten. Well, when you build a junior baybrew field, you know that you're gonna have a larger number of players, okay? I spoke to, uh, Mr. Mays in my concerns, and, uh, he said that he was doing the best that he could. Um, I just feel like that we need to put some people over there to see that the amount of money they told me that was spent. They said a million some dollars was spent over there. That's a lie. If there was three hundred thousand spent over there. I don't believe that. To say that it's a million some spent, that's a joke. The lights are not the way they're supposed to be. They, those lights should be anywhere from a hundred and fifty to a hundred feet in the air. They probably every bit of seventy to sixty-five feet in there. The fencing, in order for it to be junior baybrew legal, has to be three hundred and something feet. I stood on second base Friday and threw the ball out in the parking lot. That fence is nowhere near three hundred feet. So, I spoke to a gentleman that was here probably two months ago with the baybrew baseball, uh, which is, uh, Mr. Tolson, that's in Trent, New Jersey. And I asked him that I wanted the state tournament to be here. He said, uh, "Stargill, I'll do that for you." So now I'm, I'm, I'm inviting someone to come to a facility that I'm feeling like is gonna be like the one in Benton or the one in Bryant or the one in Lower Rock, the ones they have, for the amount of money that they're gonna be spending. And I don't even have a fence that's regulation. That fence is probably two seventy-five to three hundred feet. In order to be regulation for junior baybrew, it has to be at least three hundred and five to three hundred and ten feet. So I'm asking someone to go back out there and reevaluate what's going on.
Okay. Yes, sir.
Can that fence be placed back?
That's what I mean by non-baseball people. They've already, they've already put the poles up, so you can't move it back. And if you...
Now, what difference does it make with the lights you were talking about, about the seventy to a hundred?
Well, when you get, when you get bigger guys playing, when they hit the ball a certain amount of feet in the air, if the lights, if the lights are not up in the air a certain distance, you lose the ball. It's dark. That's why you have little E lights. You, if you go out to, if you go out to Regional Park, those are the right lights that should be over there at Townsend Park. And they're way up in there. You can take a cord and throw it out in the field and go and get it. Those lights there, I guarantee you, when you turn it on, and the kids that, that's gonna be thirteen, fourteen, fifteen-year-old kids, when they hit the ball in the air, you're gonna have a lot of kids who're gonna lose that ball.
So again, you're saying it's impossible for us to fix the field?
It's impossible. It's impossible to fix the field, right now.
And you can ride out there and look at it. I've been watching this through the conception. That's why I put the order into the change, though. We, we losing a lot of money on change orders, and we're not getting our money's worth out of what we doing. I mean, we set up here and vote on this stuff, and you look at the projects, and they're not done right. I mean, really, we losing a lot of money. That, that was, that's no way you can spend all that money out of there.
What I wanna know, what I wanna know, if, if I may, Mayor, I wanna know, is it the city council's fault, or is it the contractor's fault? That it's not in our, that's all I wanna know. Do we vote for that, or is it the contract?
In my, in my opinion, it's the contractor's fault because he wasn't a baseball guy. And then, some of us, our fault, because we didn't put someone out there who knew what they were doing.
But didn't we have a engineer or architect or somebody to come out and give us the, the numbers for this?
We, we should have a manager over that, that knows what it's supposed to be.
Yeah, but somebody has to be held accountable for the mistakes that have been made as of now. I mean, we spent our money, so we should get a legal field, you know?
Why don't we look into what your concerns, and I think Ms... Why don't we look into what your concerns, and I think Ms. Evelyn had spoken to you this afternoon.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, sir. So why don't we do that, and we've got your number, and let's address those and see what we can come up with.
And thank you for coming to the council.
I appreciate y'all.
Yes, sir, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Bill Ray?
My goodness, that ain't bad. It's hard to watch all this stuff.
Yes, sir. Thank you, you have three minutes, sir.
Mayor? Lady? Gentlemen? I'm going to challenge each and every one of you, and this is a chore for each and every one of you. Do you know how many ordinances we have? Let's do a thing that the state and the feds don't do. Let's go over all of them, and whatever we don't have anymore, we don't have horses or mews or whatever, and start doing away. I really came to talk to you about your ordinance that was pulled, number one, and really, that's a thing with me, I guess you could say, ordinances, we keep adding on to different laws. And Rex, let's try to get together on the big picture, it's what's going to help everyone, not... What am I trying to say, George? You told me to leave town one time, but I'm back. But I know it, and it shows too, doesn't it? But I appreciate everything y'all are doing. Lawyers, thank you very much, appreciate you both. And work together, work for us. And Alderman Boyd and Alderman Brown, Jr., we don't forget, we have our meeting that's coming. You're not going to be there, I know. But we're not going to have the guest speaker be here at the third of this month, and I'll relay to you when this other individual from Little Rock comes down. This is Neighborhood Watch, Mayor.
Okay.
And we'd like to hold you, and I'm not the only one who would enjoy for y'all to be involved in Neighborhood Watch, just whenever we have those meetings on Thursday nights. There are people who do come, and there are folks who don't come either. And Alderman Brown, Jr. is going to be here this coming Thursday night, the third month, at 6:30, right? That was a commitment, right, Mr. Boyd? Did you two have, you gentlemen have? But I want to thank each and every one of you for doing your jobs, and just listen, just listen. We want y'all to do your best for us, each and every one of us, you know? There's just a few of us, and y'all blessed with hair, too, so I'll say thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
I'm not going to live that down, I know.
Next person, Lillian Harris.
And I promise you I won't take up your time. One minute. I'm Lillian Harris, and I am a member of the ACO, and back in January, I think it was, February, I made a complaint about the city not having the lights. So basically, what I'm here for is to see what is the status of that. I know we did vote on it.
I can answer that.
Yes, sir.
We're waiting on a meeting with Energy. What we have to do is Energy has to meet with our financial, city finance director, along with the mayor, before we can move forward with the mayor, finance director, along with the street department, and then we move forward on selecting lights, and then we move forward. That's what we're waiting on, Energy. Energy is holding the ball right now.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone, for coming out tonight.